States of America. And to you, an autocrat for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening. Well, call this meeting as West Burn City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Crowner, Raleigh, Knightmeyer.
Here.
Please.
Here.
Waterman.
Here.
Me to perfect and approve the agenda.
Go move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through seven, which are amendments from regular city council meeting on March sixth, two thousand nineteen. Approve payment for seasons excavating and landscaping, approve payment in Des Moines County Regional Waste Commission, approve payment to Berlaken Municipal Water Works, approve liquor license renewal for S E C Foundation. Approve Carla Rode's resignation as administrative assistant to the Finance Department, and approve the claims as list as presented the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. When staff reports. Dan?
Only thing I have is, uh, in two weeks for the next council meeting, Leslie and I are be gone. Uh, if you want to move the council meeting to Tuesday, that's fine, or you'll have to do it without Leslie and I. We'll be at, in Altoona at that H R conference that we go to every year.
Anybody have any problems with movement to Tuesday? If we have to. I mean, right now, we'll leave it at Wednesday. In case something comes up. Anybody have anything for Dan? Randy?
I don't have anything tonight.
They have anything for Randy? Jess?
Uh, the only thing I have is we're gonna, I was contacted by Lieutenant, um, Thompson down at Berlaken Police Department. We're gonna start talking about Ragbri. Since Ragbri will be going through West Burlington on Friday and then going back out West Burlington on Saturday morning. So we'll start a committee. They got a committee formed through Ragbri, so we'll start meetings and I'll pass on any information that I receive during those meetings. Myself and Sergeant Boge is gonna be attending those meetings.
What's the date? I know it's a Friday.
June twenty-ninth, I mean, July, excuse me, July twenty-ninth. And it's the same week as Des Moines County Fair.
Be fun, interesting. They have anything for Jess?
It'd be July twenty-sixth, excuse me.
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I just checked. It's Friday, July twenty-sixth. You start expecting bicyclist in town around ten A M. and going through about four P M.
Which way they coming in?
Um, they're gonna come in through Bridgeport Highway seventy-nine, hi- old Highway thirty-four, Des Moines County Highway thirty-four, turn at the truck stop, go down four oh six. And then turn down South Gear by the hospital, and then go to Burlington down Division Street. And then that's the same way they're leaving town Saturday morning, out that same way, heading back towards Kiakuck.
They have anything for Jess? Sean?
I'm gonna go with nothing tonight.
Okay. They have anything for Sean? Kelly, you got anything going on? Leslie? All right, Royce, you got it. Trace? Al? All right. Everything we have on next is a community report, a review of the West Burton tree inventory by the Iowa Department Natural Resources and Richard Kittleson, an arborist. He's here to give us an overview what he did last year, uh, summer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll start real briefly. Uh, about ten years ago, the Iowa D N R Forest Department started getting grants from the U S Forest Service to do these tree inventories. Your first tree inventory was done back in twenty-eleven, uh, and what I did in twenty-eighteen was an update of that inventory. I used the data that was recorded then. It was downloaded on my phone. I went back and checked off all the trees that were recorded then. And any new trees, new planted trees, I added those in. I also added in your park trees. They were not done in twenty-eleven. The twenty-eleven inventory had four hundred and seventy trees on it. Uh, what I did in twenty-eighteen, uh, had four hundred and eighty-three trees. And the difference would be the park trees, and maybe some new planted ones too. I don't recall, but, um. Just real briefly, I'll go over the summary page. Um, your trees provide ninety-five thou- almost ninety-six thousand dollars worth of benefits annually. Uh, and that is broken down at the bottom of the page, and I do have to make a correction on the carbon benefits. It reads forty-one thousand, et cetera. That's actually supposed to be three thousand four hundred and nine dollars of new carbon sequestered in one year. And the total carbon stored in your public trees is thirty-eight thousand, so that, I wanted to correct that down there. Um, and you'll notice on those other numbers down there, the stormwater interception is almost a third of your benefits. Uh, they do a terrific job of soaking up water, uh, that would ordinarily go through the sewer system, so it's a big savings right there. Uh, the other one is reduced energy costs, uh, and that is usually for the private homeowners right next to those trees, but that's citywide. Um, I should back up real quick. The public trees, the boulevard trees and your park trees, that's the only ones I did. The private trees were not done. And an average benefit per tree of a hundred and ninety-nine dollars, so that's pretty good. You're getting two hundred dollars per year out of each one of your, average out of your trees. Uh, you have over thirty-five species, which is good. That's a good mix. The bad news is maple is almost fifty-six percent of that, and because of, we don't know what's gonna come at us next. Where the D N R is recommending that we have no more than twenty percent of any one particular genera in our tree mix. So it's recommended that you don't plant any more maples until you start bringing up your percentages of other species. And obviously, you're not gonna be planting any more ash. We have no control over the ash borer, uh, on a big scale. We can only treat one individual tree at a time, and that's, that's pretty expensive. It adds up. It can be done, but adds up. I did, uh, recommend about thirty, thirty-seven percent of the trees needed some type of management, and most of that is crown cleaning. That's cleaning out the dead branches, the branches that are crossing each other, causing problems for each other branch. It's just a, a maintenance thing that's, should be worked into. The other one, uh, the next one, I think, was about tree removal, which has recommended twenty-five trees be remove, recommended for removal, and that's of all species. It's not just the ash trees. It's all species of trees. I judge the trees on usually structural problems. There's a crack, there's a split, uh, maybe they're already in decline, uh, dying back in the top, something like that. And I did rec- I did record that five of those twenty-five are in critical condition. Uh, and some of the maps that are included in the overall plan, I know they're hard to read on that small, in that scale, uh, but they are pointed out in those maps. Uh, let's see. Back in twenty-eleven, uh, going back to the ash trees, you had forty-four ash trees at that time. You have twenty-five now, so you've been removing the ash trees, which is great. Uh, if you're not gonna treat them, uh, get them removed and get them out of your, out of your mind. I did judge nine of those to be treatable trees if you wanted to treat some.
And you got them listed on the, on the maps?
Yes. Yeah, they're on one of the maps too. Yep. Um, and if you blow up those maps, the, the, the points start to get separated, so you can see them on the individual trees a lot, a lot better. You do have, uh, an older than, larger than average size. Um, not surprised. Most of our town trees are older. Uh, fifty-nine percent are greater than eighteen inches diameter, so that's, uh, something keep in mind. You wanna get a younger stand going, uh, as you re- remove trees as you can. Eighteen of the twenty-five ash had one or more signs or symptoms of, of possible emerald ashworm infestation. Now, it's most likely just epicormic sprouts, um, maybe some dieback up on the top. I did not see any woodpecker activity in those trees. Our woodpeckers will eat the larval stage, and that's when we start seeing bare wood up at the top of the trees. You start seeing that on your ash trees, that, that it's here. Now, maybe it's already in town. I know your county is infected, but I don't know how close it is to you, uh, when it was found. Uh, that's something to keep in mind.
We've been taking some of those down, Randy, haven't?
Those that are, yeah, when they die, we've been taking them down.
Yeah, good. Um, I did give an estimate, uh, removing the twenty-five ash. Now, I use six hundred and fifty dollars per tree. That might be less, uh, if the city's doing some of your own, on your own?
We do almost all of it ourselves.
Oh, you do. Excellent. That's, that's a huge savings for the city. Um, if you were to treat those nine good ash, and I use an average of twenty-inch diameter tree, it could range from two hundred and three hundred dollars per tree, depending on the contractor. Different contractors that do that work charge different rates. Uh, it's so much per diameter inch, so if you decide to save some of your trees, or if some of your citizens are going to save some of their ash trees. They should get two bids at least, maybe even three if they can, uh, because the price can vary from eight to fifteen dollars per inch. It can be really quite a swing. Oops. Um. And at the very bottom, I put in a couple of, uh, websites. The Tree Pest of Iowa is, is a very good one to use. It's real easy. Uh, they have a map that's updated every time there's a new infestation found in this, in the state, uh, each county. Um, and they also give more information about the ash borer, uh, about other insects that are either in the state and already affecting our trees, or potential new ones. And that's where, you know, changing your percentage of maples would come in, 'cause there's a couple of things that can hit that maple species pretty hard, and there we go with those. Very quick and brief.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Any questions, folks? I know that was a very quick and a lot of, lot of numbers.
I think it's a very excellent report.
Good, thank you. And there's no cost to the city for that either, by the way. That's, uh, all covered on that grant, including myself.
Good, thank you.
And Dan's got my contact information if questions do come up, and I'd be happy to answer anything.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, folks.
Have a good one. Okay, next is up a proclamation for Junior Achievement Day in the city of West Burlington, Iowa, April fourth, twenty nineteen. And I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas the city of West Burlington recognizes junior achievement of the Heartland's purpose to inspire and prepare young people to succeed in a global economy. Whereas the city of West Burlington will observe Junior Achievement Day on April fourth, two, two thousand and nineteen, as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the Heartland for empowering our young people to own their economic success. Whereas junior achievement of the Heartland educational contribution equips our young people to become next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of West Burlington. Whereas junior achievement of the Heartland includes opportunities for educators, parents, and community volunteers to connect classroom learning to life after graduation. Whereas it is fitting for West Burlington to support the goals of junior achievement of the Heartland, and we encourage the continuing partnership of business, education, and the community in achieving these set goals. Whereas it is fitting for parents, educators, business, and other members of the community to join the celebration in an effort to ensure the future success and economic health of our young people and the communities in which they live. Now, therefore, I, um, Strauss, Mayor of City of West Burlington, do hereby proclaim official recognition of April fourth, twenty nineteen as Junior Achievement Day in the city of West Burlington, Iowa. I got the official one here for you. You're welcome. Thank you. All righty. At this time, anyone wishing to address the council matters that are not on the agenda, please step forward. Anybody wants to say anything? Go to new business. I'm number one. This is consider change order number seven related to the waste, wastewater treatment plan improvement project in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents.
Approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Please. Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number two. Is consider pay request number twenty-one related to the wastewater treatment plan improvement project in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Please. Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number three. Is consider hiring advanced traffic control to paint the street markings in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Will they be in before the fourth then, Randy?
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna try to be in the first part of June. And we will, before they get here, redo the arrows and stop blocks and stuff like that, so those should be freshened up probably as soon as the, the weather gets decent.
Roll call.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number four. Is consider resolution approving the use of hotel motel tax to help fund the annual Fourth of July celebration in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number five. Is consider repairs of the fire department's tire one vehicle in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars through felt equipment. And there's a, what, an hourly rate for the, uh, inclrometer?
Yeah, for the inclrometer and the drift adjustment, which is your side-to-side movement, um, that's an hourly rate, but they, uh, when I spoke with Feld, he estimated it to be, it would be in line with what banner it quoted at about a thousand dollars.
Motion approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Carried. I'm number six. Is consider approving the city township ambulance association agreement, and actually, that agreement doesn't expire. It's a, it's a renewal that we had to do 'cause we're changing the, the rate, the way the cities are being charged. The agreement actually went through twenty-twenty-five, but we're re- redoing it now early.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number seven. Is consider payment Snyder Associates for engineering services related to the Gear Avenue Trail Project in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number eight. Is consider resolution hiring Angela Moore as a finance officer's administrative assistant.
Motion approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Please. Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Welcome, Angela, wherever you're at. Seen you sitting here somewhere. There you are. I'm number nine. Is consider resolution amending salary for the police department administrative assistant and the Debbie City Clerk Utility Billing Administrative Assistant.
Move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number ten. Is consider resolution authorizing the sale of scrap water meters to United Meter buyers, uh, approximately fourteen hundred and ten of them for approximately four thousand dollars.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Do we have any old meters left to get replaced?
Uh, yeah, I think we have, I think there's two.
One for sure that I'm dealing with, with the city attorney right now on.
Pretty much finished up.
Everybody's done.
Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carrying. I'm number eleven. Is consider resolution approving an agreement between the city of West Burlington and the Berlaken Y M C A for the management of swimming pool for the twenty-nineteen pool season. And that fee will be the same as it was last year, thirty thousand dollars.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Please. Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number twelve. Is consider hiring dryer paint to paint the swimming pool in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion approve.
Support.
With support. Any discussion?
Can we put mermaids in a pot of gold at the bottom?
What's that?
Can we put mermaids in a pot of gold at the bottom of the pool?
Probably whatever you want.
I'd go.
Roll call.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Anybody have any old business? Anyone wishing to address the council matters that we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight?
Brian, this is your chance if you wanna.
Will state your name and address, please.
My name is Brian Boyd, uh, one twenty-eight Golf Lane, Burlington.
Go ahead, sir.
Excuse me?
I said, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Uh. My name is Brian Boyd. As I said, I'm the owner of A B C Pawn and Gun down the road here on Broadway. I, uh, started that business there about ten years ago, uh, in December of two thousand and ten. Um. Three or four years into it, uh, I had always applied for my license during this time, and there wasn't a lot of, of, uh, uh, rules and regulations, so to speak, on the pawn brokers. You didn't have any. Um, four years into it, uh, we passed a, or the city passed a ordinance where you could not be a felon, uh, and have a license to be a pawn broker. Unfortunately, my wife died that year, and I kinda went into a, um, coma state for a couple of years thereafter, so I didn't argue about it. And, uh, went on, and, uh, my dad, uh, uh, got the license because we're, my dad and my mom were both partners in the company. So this year, I applied for my license, and I am told that I can no longer work in a pawn shop because I am a felon. Not only can I not hold a license, now I can't even work there. Um, because of the new ordinance passed, I assume, last year. Um, you know, I'm not trying to, uh, uh, I've been doing this for twenty years, I'm fifty-four years old. I doubt we're gonna teach me a lot of new tricks. And, and, uh, this is my livelihood. Um, and, uh, I've been given no option, uh, or I, I feel that it is entirely prejudiced. I think it's violating not only, I think it's violating my constitutional rights, um, along with my civil rights. Um, I haven't done anything at this point, uh, to do that, but I would, um, uh, ask that, uh, the city of West Burlington was very close with that cause. Um, that you, you've done with that, 'cause my doors have been closed now for three weeks, four weeks. Um. I'm obviously not gonna sit here, uh, very long and survive. Uh. I pay twelve thousand dollars a year in property tax there. I pay sales tax there. Um, I just feel that this has been something, obviously, there's no one to object to it because I didn't know about it. I'm a very busy man. I didn't know about it, and yes, you posted and all that, but who's gonna object to something that doesn't pertain to them? So, I mean, I would just ask that you all look at the, the, uh, emotions that you, you cause, because it just, it just gets to be, I'm trying to retire, and now we're tearing the business down to something that I may not even have my buyer now because of all this. Um, this is, this is something that I think needs to be looked at, and I think it's where you're done.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, my name is Ryan Drew, one-two-six-eight-eight Flint Bottom Road. Um, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my position as president of the Des Moines Henry County Labor Alliance. Um, we represent, similar to like a city would belong to League of Cities, Chamber of Commerce, to advocate, uh, for their issues, uh, as a, a group of entities together. Uh, the Des Moines Henry County Labor Alliance is, is representative of different worker groups, uh, typically union affiliated bargaining units across our different communities. Um, I'm speaking here tonight, um, about what we understand is what we would consider to be an attack on, on workers' rights. Um, the last two years, I would say for the people, the, the workers, employers, employees in the state of Iowa have been a tough two years. Um, it was a little less than two years ago, uh, stood in this room at a, a forum chamber, or a forum, a legislative forum after the Republican-controlled legislator passed that bill, and, uh, I can tell you anybody that was here that day, the overwhelming crowd was, was not in sport of that legislation. And that's fine. That's the way our political system works, but, but the one thing we all need to understand is that was put in place by Republican Party, a Republican governor that was acting as a check and a balance, sort of speak a scale, to balance the things on employer relations and, and not only public sector, but the private sector. But in this specific instance, chapter twenty pertains to the public, uh, bargaining units. So, um, we've seen what the eroding of that, what attack on workers lead to. It leads to activities, um, such as Oklahoma, West Virginia, where when that scale, that balance is tipped or skewed out of, uh, out of sorts, um, the workers feel they have no choice but to, to take action. That's what that bill has done in our state for many years, many years. It's worked. It's worked well. Um, and, and when we see, the one thing, as bad as that bill was, the one thing they did right was left it to the local entities on whether they wanted to come in and gut the contract or what they wanted to do with it. We see right next door in Danville, uh, a good friend of mine, Sandy Dokendorf, went to the superintendent and said, hey, what are we trying to accomplish here? If we're just trying to follow a trend, that's fine. We can do that, but if there's tr- truly something you wanna accomplish through negotiations, let's be respectful. Let's work with the individual, our employees, figure out what's wrong, we'll fix the problem, but let's not disrespect them. Let's not divide this group who works for us every day and teaches our kids. It's no different than what we're talking about here tonight. If there's an issue that, that thirty years' worth of negotiations hasn't addressed, go to the bargaining unit and address those one-on-one. There's no reason that thirty years' worth of collective bargaining should be erased. Anybody that's been involved with collective bargaining knows you start with language first. And the only reason you do that is because there's a value to it. If you do away, I'll trade you this piece of language for this much money, right? 'Cause we all've got a budget that we have to live in. So by going into negotiations and saying, we're erasing thirty years' worth of history, you're taking thirty years of value to the people, the men and women that have worked for the city, and just evaporating it. And why? 'Cause we can? That's, that's not a, that's not how we treat neighbors. That's not how we treat employees, I wouldn't think. That's certainly not what the expectations this city has for their employees on how they treat the homeowners in our community, I hope. It's, it's, you're here to help. You're here to have a relationship with the people that we serve in these communities. It's no different when you're dealing with employee relations here. Um, you know, and as you try and look at this, I've, I've learned two things this spring. One, I guess first I'd start off, nothing good comes from Cedar Rapids, 'cause after bringing in a tax assessor from Cedar Rapids, I think we're all enjoying a tax increase. And the other thing is, we bring in attorneys, negotiate these, and they spread this kind of stuff in our communities. We went through this at the Board of Supervisors, and now we find ourselves fighting it here in, in West Burlington. This isn't, at least coming from the private sector, we'd sit down with our counterparts and we'd negotiate. We didn't need an attorney. We knew what the, the outcome was gonna be. We either went to strike, or we found an agreement, and there was both, interest on both parties to find agreement and remedy that contract, to establish a new agreement. And there was both, interest on both parties to find agreement and remedy that contract, to establish a new agreement. Um, I go to, through my job as, as, with building trades and also as a business rep with operators, I go to a lot of chamber functions because we're always looking at, what do we wanna do to grow our communities, right? We're all pooling our money together for their advice on how we grow these communities. And I've never went to any meeting of theirs where they said, we need to have a PR campaign, we need to attack our workers. It's all about, it's all focused on what we can do to retain and attract people in our communities. So you can understand, or I guess hope you can appreciate my understanding, or my lack of understanding of how on one page we do nothing but attack workers and say, you've got it too good. The next generation can't have what you have. Then over here, we step over here and say, what are we gonna do to keep these people in our communities? If I'm a kid going to school and I see my dad and my mom getting attacked at workplace, why would I stay here in this community? I would go to somewhere that appreciates their workers, similar to the message that Danville has sent to their teachers. We respect what you do for us. If there's a problem, we'll continue to negotiate with you and we'll address those. Um, I guess in closing, um, hopefully your mind isn't made up. Um, we're here tonight to show support for our brothers and sisters in this bargaining unit. We truly feel we have members in our community asking what's going on. They wanna know that the community they live in, they pay taxes in, supports working people, and that's what I asked you to do tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Carrie L. Duncan. I reside at thirty-one forty New London Road, New London, Iowa. I am a, uh, International Association Machinist Chief Steward, representing the workers at the Iowa Army Ammunition Plant here in Middletown, Iowa. I'm also a trustee and member of Des Moines Henry County Labor Alliance. Coming here tonight in support, to ask that your employees be negotiated a continuing contract between themselves and the management. A contract is a binding agreement between labor and management. A company policy handbook is not binding, and it can be changed at a whim's notice by management. I ask, why would the healthy and harmonious relationship between the business and the workers want to be disrupted? As the main goal is to achieve a fruitful business, and your workers are your investment in man, in maintaining this goal. Lately, at supper breaks and other breaks, my coworkers have been coming to me, and they've been asking me. And many of these workers are from Burlington and West Burlington. They say, Carrie, why would they con- not continue to offer their workers a contract? How can they infringe on the respect and dignity of their employees and their families? They say to me, is it not true that chapter twenty did not declare that they had to impose a company policy now upon their workers? How can they abide, why can they, how can they cannot abide by keeping the contract bargaining agreement in place? These are questions that are being frowned upon by your constituents, of whom all hold bo- voting rights and tax, and pay, and their taxpayers. And they will not forget your choice that you are going to make concerning your workers.
My name's Mike Rissy. I live at one-two-seven-two-six Hundred Thirty-third Street in Burlington, Iowa. Uh, I've been a worker in the Public Works Department for twenty-three years. Current job title is maintenance coordinator. There are five other employees in the Public Works with me. One has seventeen years of experience, one has nineteen years, one has twenty-one years, and another has thirty-two years. All of that together is a ton of experience to maintain and do what's right for the citizens of West Burlington. I'm having a hard time understanding why you wanna get rid of our contract. It doesn't say you have to. Has someone told you to? What is the city gaining by this? What we do is not just a job title. We all go above and beyond to get the job done. I could talk forever, but there's a few definite things I wanna talk about. We're constantly reminded that overtime's a benefit, when actually it's not a benefit. It's required by us, and we all six do it with no questions asked. Afternoon, two in the morning, four in the morning, whenever it is. Our supervisor knows when our phones ring, the six of us get there as quick as we can to take care of this town. I know my hours are subject to change, to what my supervisor needs us to do, to benefit the city and the citizens of West Burlington. Overtime is not a benefit to me. When I have to tell my family, I know we've been planning this for a long time, but I have to go to work. They ask why. I says, because I'm responsible, I'm loyal to this city. I've missed numerous holidays, family events, because I'm a loyal employee and I care about my job. And I, I just don't feel that I'm being respected for my twenty-three years of service here, along with the five other people I work with. There's been countless times in my twenty-three years, between me and my coworkers, we've never even clocked in for the overtime. For example, you get a phone call from the water plant, high water level, the tower's overflowing. On the way in, do you drive by the tower to go punch a clock and get a city vehicle out? No, you stop immediately, fix the alarm if there's an issue, make phone calls, get help, then go to the shop, punch in, get your equipment, your tools to go fix the tower, a main break or whatever it is. If it's as simple as flipping a switch and fixing the problem, me and my employees don't run out to punch that clock just to get that two hours overtime from the city. We go back to our families, we go back home and go to bed. The same in the sewer department. I used to live on the south side of Burlington. And we had issues for years in the south lift station alarms going off. I'm driving to the shop. Do I bypass a lift station, could be flooding electric motors, causing thousands of dollars of damage, just to go punch the clock and grab a truck? No, I pull in there, open the panel, check the issue, shake a float that got hung up by mistake, cancel the alarm, make sure it stays canceled, go back and go to bed. The pool. There's two of us, sometimes three. It's daily routine during the summer. Your family's preparing for what you're gonna do, I gotta go take care of the pool. Even though we have management there, we still gotta go start pumps that got kicked out by a lightning. Check this. We got a leak in the chlorine here. Take care of things. We got employees that are going there on their own time, and I don't really know anybody for the pool issues. You stop on Saturday and Sunday, you take care of it? We're not asked for overtime, we're told to punch in. It's more important just to forget it and get back to your family. Same with equipment. I've got calls in the evenings from an officer, hey, my car's doing this. Should I be concerned? Should I park the car or do I do what it is? No, if it runs afine, it's fine. No, I think you should park that, grab another unit, first thing, seven AM. I'll take that unit and we'll figure out what's wrong with it. I don't ask for extra to be called at night at my home. I just do it, 'cause I'm responsible. Same thing with snow. It's been a very bad year. Us six employees spent almost four weeks, a month here. Maybe two days off in that whole month to maintain these roads and do what's right. It's our job. I know it's our job, but we're doing it without any drama, any issues, and no complaints to you guys. It's just taken care of. I don't have to stay at the shop. The one high storm with winds, I brought a cot in. I spent the night there because I know my road and I would not be able to get here when my supervisor called me in to start fighting the snowstorm. So I took it on myself to sleep in that shop on a cot, because I'm responsible and I care about my job. Could go on and on. The bottom line is, you have employees that care and are loyal to this town. We work hard, we don't cause drama, we go above and beyond to make sure things are running smoothly. There's so much more we do behind the scenes that you don't even recognize. You don't have to follow in suit with everyone and completely strip our contract. Worked out between employees and employer for my twenty-three years, that I don't know of any issue that all of a sudden that we as a city has come to this point that let's just throw it all away. You need to help us understand why. I'm asking you to take leave, do what's right. Take out the item, the items that the law says you have to take out. Leave the rest alone. Show employees you appreciate their work. Just asking you to think about it, talk to us. There's no lea- no reason for disrupting, taking care of the town and its citizens and be able to work my twenty-three years here doing what's right for this town. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Hello, council. My name's Troy Klein. I live at one-one-two-oh-six Hundred Forty-second Avenue, West Burlington. I, for you that don't know me, I've worked for the city going on nineteen years. I'm currently the utility coordinator. For the last sixteen years or so, I've been on the bargaining committee and bargained the contracts that we have here. Uh, we've never had a problem, always bargained in good faith. I think once we had to go to a mediator, we got that straightened out. Uh, it's never been a problem bargaining. Uh, not too sure why I understand, or I don't understand why you guys wanna get the contract. I could sit here and talk about what Mike talked about. I think he did a pretty good job. You guys get the idea of what we do at the shop, if you didn't already know. I guess my biggest thing is I'd just like to ask each one, each one of you, I know, uh, you guys are doing this for a reason. I'd just like to know why. I wanna know what the benefit for the city is getting our contract. So I'm gonna ask each one personally. Mr. Height Meyer, what do you think? What's your opinion? Why do you think that this is the best for the city?
Four answers, Troy. We're not bargaining.
I'm not bargaining anything.
Well, this is bargain, this is part of bargaining right now.
How is it bargaining?
They've already made the policy on what's gonna be bargained, so they really don't have to tell you anything.
I'm not bargaining anything. How is that bargaining?
You're trying to circumvent bargaining right now.
Well, no.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
It's not what I'm trying to do.
You're trying to circumvent bargaining procedures right now.
I think it ought to be, I think, I think their opinions, along with everybody's here, ought to be out in the open.
That would be great, Troy. Would you guys like to bargain in open session?
We're not bargaining.
Would you like to bargain in open session?
What are we gonna be bargaining for?
When we sit down the next time to bargain, would you like to have the public sit in on it?
I'm fine with that.
Well, ask our attorney. But we're not bargaining here right now.
Alright.
My name is Brian Plath. I live at five-oh-nine West Agency, number seventy-three. Um, I am an executive board member of UAW Local Twelve Thirty-seven and serve as a political cap chair as well. I am a trustee for Southeast Iowa CAP and a delegate for Des Moines Henry County Labor Alliance. Before I was born, former UAW President Walter Luther said, there is a direct relationship between the ballot box and the bread box. What we fight for at the bargaining table can be taken away with the stroke of a politician's pen. This holds true today in this room for these union members, as it is, as it did when these state politicians stripped the rights away with chapter twenty. An attack on one union is an attack on all unions, which is an attack on the middle-class citizens of West Burlington. Because the unions helped shape the middle class in the United States. Growing up in a union household, I saw firsthand how important a binding union contract is for a family. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Drouzel, but, uh, I believe you probably stood alongside my father when, uh, there were strikes that were taking place down at J.I. Case.
I believe I did, and I still, and I still pay union dues.
That is correct. And when you were doing that, you were doing that for the benefit of your family that I went to school with. I went to school with your children, and I saw how well they've become. The scary part is, is now we're looking at removing the rights of these p- union workers. Another thing we need to take a look at is these future children, grandchildren are gonna be filling these positions. And the sad part is, is like Ryan said, there's thirty years, lot of money that has been spent to get to this level, and we're throwing it all away. So if this attack on the workers fails to cease, you can rest assured, the unions will unite, and they will elect labor-friendly candidates to restore the permissive concessions back to our brothers and sisters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, entertain the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Port.
I have a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's adjourned. Thank you.